All right. Thank you very much. Sorry for the delay, everyone. Appreciate it as we start here on our work session today, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The first item on the agenda today is the preliminary agenda review. The work session for October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four to commence at five thirty P M. And seven o'clock P M. Regular session in the council chambers. Call to order by Mayor Tequisha Martinez, then followed by invocation. Anybody feel froggy for invocation?
We're changing the start time.
Yes, five thirty P M. Okay, we'll do that then.
I just want to make sure.
Yes, ma'am. Work session will be at five thirty P M. By regular session at seven. Yes, ma'am. That's a change from what was originally at four P M. Followed by pledge to the flag, then announcements. Rules of procedure effective December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution by elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy of the city clerk for inclusion on the official record. Meeting scheduled Tuesday, November fifth, two thousand and twenty-four is election day. No meeting scheduled. Tuesday, November twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, work session at four P M. Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, regular session at seven P M. Wednesday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, meet with the county delegation of Hagerstown Community College. The time to be determined. Thursday, November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, informal orientation for newly affected newly elected officials. Location and time to be determined. Monday, November twenty-fifth, oath of office to new administration. Location and time to be determined. Tuesday, November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, first work session of the new administration. Time to be determined. Followed by agenda items, citizen comments. Citizen comments on agenda items shall be limited to topics listed for consideration on the agenda and limited to three minutes. Then will be the approval of the minutes from the September tenth, September seventeenth, and September twenty-fourth meetings. Followed by appointments, Hagerstown Youth Council Partner Group me, Partner Group members. Proclamations, Economic Development Week. Then the consent agenda. Engineering, City Hall First Floor renovation contract, G R C, General Contractors Incorporated. Zollinger, Pennsylvania, six hundred thousand dollars. curb and sidewalk replacement, second year contract, Hinson and Sons Incorporated from Hagerstown, Maryland. Not to exceed two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Traffic calming monitoring equipment, all traffic solutions, State College, Pennsylvania, twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. Fire, vehicle fire training prop, fire blast, Marietta, California, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. Man door replacement, nine twenty-nine Eldridge Drive, H P G Windows and Doors, Hagerstown, Maryland, eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. H F D relocation administration offices, nine twenty-nine Eldridge Drive, two men and a truck, Hagerstown, Maryland, eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Fire chief vehicle, twenty twenty-four Chevy Tahoe, Criswellauto.com, Gaithersburg, Maryland, eighty-five thousand dollars. Deputy Fire Chief vehicle, two thousand and twenty-four Chevy Colorado. I G Barton out of Berlin, Maryland, eighty-five thousand. Fire training tower shutter shutter repair, G E and I Construction Incorporated, Hyattsville, Maryland, thirty-one thousand, two hundred. Information technology, we have Arctic Wolf Security Software Annual Renewal. Winslow Technology Group out of Waltham, Massachusetts, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents. V X Rail Virtual Infrastructure Refresh out of Maven Spire, Annapolis, Maryland, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. Fiber Expansion slash Connectivity, H F D Headquarters, nine twenty-nine Eldridge Drive. Skyline Technology Solutions out of Glenn Burney, Maryland, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Planning and code administration, property abatement work, Lawn Topia Group L L C, Thurmont, Maryland, fifty thousand dollars. Sixteen field tablets with accessories, Staples Incorporated, seven thousand, five hundred dollars and sixty-four cents. That's the addendum that we were provided. Yes, sir. Police Uniform Shirts, Howard Uniform Company, Baltimore, Maryland, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-four cents. Uniform Pants, Howard Uniform Company, Baltimore, Maryland, fifteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. F Y twenty-five Street Crime Camera Technology Project, Spiker Security Services, Hagerstown, Maryland, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy cents. Public Works, City Park Ornamental Fencing, Long Fence out of Ijumsville, Maryland, fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. Bulk Road Salt Per Ton Delivered, seventy-four dollars and eighty-six cents. Cargill Incorporated out of North Olmsted, Ohio, one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Two-ton Overhead Crane Cone Cranes out of Winchester, Virginia, fourteen thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty cents. Wheaton Park Phase Two Natural Play Equipment, Compton Incorporated, Austin, Texas, one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-six cents. Utilities, we have water generator, annual maintenance contract, Fidelity Power Systems out of Sparks, Maryland, thirteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Water Generator for Water Pump Station Four, ARPA-Grant, Fidelity Power Systems out of Sparks, Maryland, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars. Water Heating Oil for Water Facilities, A C and T, Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. Waste Water Purchase and Installation of Cameras, Glessner, Hagerstown, Maryland, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and ten cents. Waste Water Generator for Waste Water Pump Two, ARPA-Grant, Fidelity Power Systems out of Sparks, Maryland, seventy-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. Waste Water Pelletizer Operations Contract for F Y twenty twenty-five, NEFCO, Baltimore, Maryland, one million, five hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and seven thousand and thirty-five cents. Unfinished Business, Approval of an Ordinance, twenty twenty-four Land Management Code Amendments, tabled on September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Approval of an Ordinance Amendments to Chapter two thirty. Then on to New Business, Approval of Resolution Rescinding and Ordinance for Alley Number Two dash one oh five. Approval of Certification, Certifying Properties to Be Withheld from the twenty twenty-five Tax Sale pursuant to Section fourteen, eight eleven C of the Tax. Property Article of Annotated Code of Maryland. Approval of Funding for Community Coalition Lobbyist. Approval of Free Holiday Parking. Approval of Amendments to Guidelines and Applications for Invest Hagerstown Home Ownership Initiative Program. Approval of a Resolution, Termination of Agreement for One Hundred North Potomac Street Student Housing Project. Accept Grant from Maryland Emergency Management. Approval of After-School Program at Parkside Community Center. Approval to Accept Bulletproof Vest Grant. And Approval of Federal Lobbyist Contract. And we have one additional addition from today, and that is the Amendment of the J S S A Agreement. We then move on to General Citizen Comments. General Citizen Comments are welcome and shall be limited to three minutes. Citizens are welcome to provide comments in person or by sending an email to councilcomments@hagerstownmd.org. No later than five P M. On Tuesday, October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. Include your full name, home address, street address, and topic of your comments. You may attach a letter to the email or write your comments in the body of the message. The city clerk will read your name, address, and provide summary of the comments. Full copy of the comments will be provided for public viewing as part of the minutes. Then City Administrator Comments, Mayor and Council Comments, and then we would adjourn.
So I have a question about the, I think it's under New Business, the holiday parking. Is now the right time to discuss it? Okay. I'm sure I've read through the email or the memo, and I'm just trying to decipher it because it's got kind of different dates and different times. But there, I just want to kind of confirm for my own sake. So the the free parking, the free holiday parking part of all this. Oh, this this does. So free all day, free all day, free all day, parking resumes. Okay, so basically, this is great with the dates. This this answers my questions, but to recap what this says. Basically, it's the weekends that are the free free parking during the holiday season. Through through the end, end of December, and then also New Year's Day. Okay. That that is, thank you very much.
And typically, we run this through New Year's, the New Year's. It didn't really pan out to run it that far. So we just run it through the weekend right after Christmas, and that's pretty much what it is. That's been pretty typical the last twenty-five years or so. Do you want me to change the motion, read any kind of dates or anything in there? Do you want to make that any clearer, or is the motion okay the way it is? Because I can rewrite. Motion was attached to the memo. Because that's certainly be written for before next week before you vote on.
I mean, I think it would be great to include this list as an attachment.
It's as attached to the, yeah, we can do that. I can put all the dates in there if you want to read.
We'll cover it that way.
I think that way for the minutes it'll be out.
Sure, sure.
So I mean, I think the intention of this is to encourage shoppers, right? To go downtown, do their holiday shopping at businesses in downtown. So I think that I think that's a great idea. Just wanted to kind of clarify that it's not like the whole period from Thanksgiving to New Year's kind of thing. So thanks for clarifying that.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. This would be Washington County Transit Quit Claim Request, portion of Alley one thirty-five. Jim Bender with us, as well as Andrew Eschelman, Washington County Public Works Director. And we have one other gentleman here with us.
Yeah, sorry, didn't make the agenda. It's Chris Sedanis with Michael Baker International. He's the consultant that is working with Washington County on their, some of the planning they're doing. So I think you're all familiar with the Washington County Transit Facility out on West Washington Street at the intersection of Washington Street and Devonshire Road. It serves as the home for the administrative offices for Washington County Transit, and it's also their maintenance and storage facility for the for their buses and for their vehicles that they use. Washington County is in the process of doing some long-range planning for that facility and trying to figure out what's what the possibilities are, how suitable it would be. And as they started looking at, started looking at the properties that they own there, one hindrance to them doing an expansion or staying there long-term is that there's an alley, an existing concrete alley that divides the the properties that they own. So to get through that, what they've requested is a quit claim of a portion of that alley that would take that issue away and would allow them to more fully use the the property. So I think I'm going to turn it over to Andrew and let him talk a little bit about what the what the county is planning to do there, what this what this process is. And then Chris is going to be able to show some slides and some data on why they really feel that this quit claim is required.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, so Washington County Transit is looking at our long-term needs. And so with any future service expansion, there's always corresponding administrative and facility support that that needs to accompany that. And so I want to recognize Matt Mullinex and the Hagerstown Eastern Metropolitan Planning Organization really for initially spearheading this effort. They're the ones that are paying for this study, as well as enlisting Michael Baker for this effort. And if you followed the success that they've had in Martinsburg with the transit facility, that's kind of the model we're looking to parlay here locally, which is taking the opportunity to apply for federal grants. In this case, the acronym is a RAISE grant. There are a hundred percent federal funds available for rural transit communities such as ourselves. And so really, this is laying the groundwork to look at what our facility needs are now and into the future. And so that's really the origins of this is looking at where currently limited in our ability for service base, as well as administrative support, dispatchers, those sort of things for us to look at. Expanding routes, public transit in the community. And so as Jim highlighted, one of the things with our existing configuration there is the alley, and we own properties on both sides of that. And so when we look at expanding and those future needs, which Chris is going to highlight a little bit more, there's some just challenges with when that's treated as one parcel versus two. So again, when we talk about the future of Washington County Transit, from our, from my perspective at least, we have our transfer center located downtown, right behind the administrative office. And so having close proximity between the two is just wise from an operational standpoint. But in looking at the timeframe, again, the study that they're looking at for the facility needs is about twenty fifty. But really, when we're talking about the federal grant assurances and the requirements, we're forecasting out forty years. So we're really at the point where we're trying to look at, you know, how we're going to provide the service to support, not just where we're at in the five to ten-year period, but potentially out as far as forty years. And so that's a lot of where this is right now. We're not saying that in the next five years, you know, we're going to reach these growth milestones, but but that's the timeframe that we're we're evaluating what the service needs are. So there's some slides up there for, you know, additional information about the ridership and potential growth and that sort of thing. But I'll turn it over to Chris, and I also want to recognize, you know, part of this process, you'll see in your packet. We did send out certified letters to the the property owners. We have some representatives, and we've been speaking with them as well. So I think it's important that you hear their feedback and hopefully understand that we're willing to collaborate and partner on what we need to do to make this happen. So, Chris?
Thank you, Andrew. Good evening. So one of the first things that we did when we were tasked with this is to identify what the current environment is at Washington County Transit and how are they currently suited to fit their needs at the current time? So I'm just going to go through this real quick. And the other part of this is, we talked with Andrew, his team, and say, what does it look like for twenty fifty? But we also kind of asked about, what does it look like a little bit beyond that? As Andrew referenced, that, you know, F T A gives a forty-year minimum use of life for a facility. So knowing that transportation is continuously growing across the U.S., what does it look like up to twenty fifty? And and what do we think we might be able to see a little bit past that? So the maintenance right now does not meet their needs. The administrative facility doesn't meet their needs. The interior bus storage doesn't meet their needs. The total building doesn't meet their needs. And the only thing that currently meets their needs is parking for employees and visitors. So this is just for their current needs. Now, the current needs is is to get by, but they want to be able to advance. So right now, they want to hire additional positions, but that's not part of the twenty fifty plan. That's 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 for right now. So one of the things that we have identified is what do they need for twenty fifty? And that's where we have identified, they need sixty-eight hundred square feet for maintenance, fifty-two hundred square feet for administrative, and that's also for all-hands training. And training is essential, where they'll be able to bring everyone in at once. They're able to have amenities, break rooms, other resources available for all employees to use in that administrative area. The interior storage, twenty-one thousand square feet is what's needed. That includes appropriate circulation, parking, non-restriction on size. And I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but it's it's everything that's needed, not just parking nose to tail the vehicles. And then for vehicle parking, you may say, you know, why did it go down in size? So I just want to say, one of the things we looked at is we used the planning codes where it required, or the zoning codes where where we utilized main shift because it's kind of like a warehouse, like a trucking center, where they come in, but they don't work there, but they leave. So we need to account for a parking space, but we also need to account for the administrative staff at the same time. So we utilize the administrative or the office net calculation at the same time. So I, again, I just want to talk at a high level for both Option A and Option B. The maintenance and the administrative size will stay the same. The key thing that we wanted to utilize here is maximize the existing footprint that currently exists, and the expansion space would be utilized for bus storage. And we were able to actually use that theory when we looked at the existing footprint, measured the walls, measured the departments, talked to Andrew and his team and say, what do you need? We used the American Public Transportation Association. They have these calculations and metricses to identify how many maintenance stalls. What's what's the size that you need for a fuel area, service lane? And again, for administrative appropriate size. Again, also focusing on what the needs for the current, future, and long term. So here you'll notice that the the storage facility does encompass the approval of the quit claim. It does utilize that alley space and then the setback space with that. So this allows for nine aisles of vehicle parking. And it does cease the alley at that time. Parking spaces are adequate at twenty-seven, but we have more than that because we know that throughout time, there could be visitors that could come, there could be expansion in service. So we have accounted up to large in that, but we put twenty-seven here as the minimum. There's more than twenty-seven parking spaces for employees and visitors on both layouts. Layout B is of a much smaller size. Again, everything is the same for the administrative and the maintenance, but now we have an eighteen thousand square foot parking facility. You know, three thousand square feet, is that a big deal? It is a big deal. It's a big deal because that eliminates two aisles of parking. Each aisle of parking will fit four of their larger, of their largest vehicles from nose to tail. And those four vehicles are part of their future. Right now, they're planning between now and twenty twenty-five to add at least six vehicles. That's on the on the lighter end. That could be larger, and again, we're talking about forty years of of planning for a facility. What does that look like? The last thing we want to do is have the transit authority move into their facility, and in twenty-five years, outgrow it. And that's a challenge. So some of the challenges with the quit claim not going through, again, I want to talk about safety. Safety is the biggest thing that is one of their challenges right now. Most, a majority, about eighty percent of their vehicles have a nose on them. So when they leave their bus wash, they have to cross over that alley. That alleyway is two ways of traffic. Unfortunately, with their vehicles, they have a nose on them. They have about four and a half to five feet of nose that they have to stick out before they can see. Am I clear? Not clear. There's traffic mitigations can be put in place, but they don't eliminate the risk. The twenty-one thousand square foot building is needed for sizing, but it also, it butts up the building to building. So then, again, it eliminates that safety risk of oncoming traffic. Another thing that also want to talk about is is the hiring of lane service attendants. Those are the individuals that move vehicles across the lot. Currently, right now, they require a commercial driver's license. Why is it needed? Because they're crossing over that public alley. With the with the buildings being butt-to-butt connected to each other, there would be no need for a commercial driver's license because you can operate your vehicles on your property without a commercial license. Again, the eighteen thousand square foot is going to limit Washington County Transit. And again, that service areas, all of Washington County and Hagerstown, to twenty fifty. So knowing that, again, if the quit claim is is not approved, and if Washington County goes forward with the smaller size, they will be stuck for forty years of the service size that they have. And again, I mentioned that they're planning to add six additional vehicles. Those additional vehicles will be restricted in size. Their paratransit vehicles will be seven passengers. They'll be sixteen feet. Their fixed route vehicles would probably be around twenty to twenty-five feet, maybe thirty feet. But then we would have a limited parking and not universal parking. So once those vehicles are added, they'll be restricted in size. Again, you grow service because you have an increase in demand. So we're only going to be able to partially meet service by expanding vehicles with restricted sizes. And with restricted, sorry, with restricted sizes comes restricted seating capacity. So you're solving a problem, but you're only short-term solving the problem when you're growing service. And last, I want to talk about, there's there's not going to be the availability to go to electric battery-operated vehicles. With battery-operated vehicles, there's the increased amount of vehicles that are needed. The federal funding does allow for that. But, you know, going to a battery fleet would not be possible at all. Again, going to a low or zero in other ways, whether it's compressed natural gas or hydrogen, are other options. But there might be limitations for conduit, parking spaces between vehicles with that restricted size. And again, with the smaller size, you go from nine aisles to seven aisles. And I'm going to pass it over to you, back to Jim.
Great. So in the city's process for doing quit claims, we require a couple of things. One is that we reach out to all the various city departments to find out if they have any objections or concerns to the public right of way going away. I did that, contacted the city departments. Everyone was okay with it. The only comment I got back from Hagerstown Light Department is there are existing utility poles in that alley, and they have their facilities on them. Those poles are actually owned by Verizon. So I reached out to Verizon, and they basically said, we can, things can be relocated if somebody pays for it. You know, so that's, I think that that's open as a possibility. It's not a, it's not a hindrance to it. The other thing that we require in our policy is we require the applicant to contact any other property owner that has land that touches that alley because they're going to be potentially affected in some way by this quit claim. And so as Andrew said, they did that. They sent certified letters to the three other property owners that have land that touches the touches the alley. They only received one response. That was from the, uh. Make sure I get the name right. Yeah, I wanted to get the full name, but I don't have it here. It's the Orchard Hills, yeah, Jehovah's Witnesses. And there are representatives here from from the church. They expressed concern, and their letter is in here, that by losing access on that eastern end of the alley, that it would negatively impact their ability and their congregants to freely come and go from the church because their access, their parking lot is accessed from the alley. So everyone has to use at least part of the alley to get in and out. Now, with this quit claim, the western half of the alley, where the church's parking lot is, would still be open, would still be available for use. But it would prevent them, would prevent someone leaving the church from heading east and going back over to Devonshire Road. I took this to the plant, or to the Planning Commission last Wednesday. Presented the, basically, the same request to them. Representatives from the congregation were also at that meeting. And talked through, you know, how this, how this could be made to work. And I think that where we landed in the recommendation from the, or the motion from the Planning Commission was, they are okay with the quit claim as long as Washington County and the church can find a common solution to improve access for the church to make sure that they have sort of two-way flow out to Nottingham Road at some time. So that really is, I think that's the direction that we were heading in. I know that the engineers for the church that they're working with on some parking lot improvements and the engineers of Michael Baker are talking back and forth and looking at different layouts for how this could be accomplished. They don't show up very well, but Donna gave you at the end, there are three alternative ways that the alley could be widened, or a separate exit driveway could be put out to Nottingham Road to try to alleviate this concern. So really, that's, that's why I'm here, because since this request has been made, I'm not asking the council at this point to necessarily vote on this. I wasn't planning on bringing it to the council at the regular session. But for the county's benefit, I think they need, they need to know, is this a possibility in the future? Would the city consider doing this quit claim in the future? Because that affects their whole planning process that they're trying to do for their facility. So really, we're just trying to, you know, trying to get them to the place where they know what their next step is.
Council, does anyone have any thoughts on that or any guidance?
What's the most practical solution for the ingress and egress to the church?
Well, I think it still needs to be studied. The, the issue is at the end of that alley where it hits Nottingham Road, there's an existing utility pole. That to widen that end of the alley, that pole would have to be relocated, which it could be done, but it's a, it's a complication. So I think what we're actually looking at, one of the other options is instead of widening the, the alley with, leave it the way it is and construct a separate, like an exit driveway that would get from the parking lot out to Nottingham Road. But I
On the other side of the church?
It would be on the same side. Same side, and if I can see, that rendering is not in there. That was a rendering that we sent over to zoning and they came back with a recommendation of making that change. So if you look in your packet, that you won't see that option in there.
You mean putting the driveway in and out here?
Yes.
And leaving the alley, the little piece of alley?
But Sue, you would have one way, each, the alley and the driveway would be directional flowed. So the alley would be in and then the new driveway would be out.
Where the new driveway, is that proposed on the other side of the, the church building or where was that?
It's on the same side where the alley is.
So effectively widening that piece of the alley just until you get to the parking lot or?
Sue, that was, that was initially part of, part of the plan, but then it came back that there's that utility pole in the way. Move it over to be in this, not in the center, but move it over, I'd say, I think about fifteen, twenty feet about, and then have that alleyway there. So it looks most closely to, I believe, the third drawing in your packet. Right now, that shows an alleyway right up against next to the current alley. It would be right in the middle of that additional parking spot, parking spaces. And that's also using the renderings that the church provided with us. That would only take away two of those, I believe it's forty-eight, so it would take it down to forty-six parking spaces.
What if you, is the reason we're trying to keep that piece of alley because the utility poles are there? In other words, I wouldn't, I don't understand why you wouldn't just get rid of the alley altogether, bring it over and have the parking butt up against the abutment of the property then. And then you don't lose spaces, you actually gain spaces.
The gas station as well.
So part of the gas station, and again, one of the things that the church brought forward is they wanted to be able to have not, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but not a bottleneck. So having the two entrance, having an entrance and an exit with directional flow for safety and for increased movement.
And if I might add, from what I recall from the planning commission meeting, the church did say that even though the other abutting property owners didn't respond to the letter, that I guess some folks from the gas station do use that portion of the alley.
For deliveries.
So they wanted to maintain that to make sure that the gas station can still use that as well.
Following up on Councilman Alshire's question. So I think from these pictures, I'm trying to ascertain, but is there only one Verizon or any utility pole along that alley? The one in the picture or are there multiples?
There, there are multiple.
And will there be any that are going to have to be removed and replaced or relocated or bury the utilities or whatever anyhow?
Yes, if the quit claim goes through and they want to construct that building across what had been the alley, there is a pole right there.
So there's going to have to be utility work at some point. And, you know, if it's possible to maybe bury those utilities, I don't know. Don't want to create too much expense, but, you know, bury those utilities or just relocate them. I mean, I, I think where the council was going is the easiest thing seems to be just to widen that alley to two-way. Enough for two vehicles to pass. So, you know, and, and, and deal with the utility pole. Why are you dealing with the other utility poles that have to be?
Want to say, one of the other things that we were working with that we found out later on, we found out at our last meeting, was the church is also trying to increase parking at the same time. And, and widening the alley, I think was the last option with that because it went against their current plans of trying to expand it to up to over forty-some parking spaces.
Okay, that's, that's new information. By the way, what's the green in your?
So the green is stormwater management.
Stormwater management and setbacks, and so that's also.
It's kind of off-limits space?
Yes. We, we've tried to maximize as much as we've can. We've looked at as many different options, especially if the quit claim doesn't go through, what, what are the other options? And the green area is untouchable.
Okay. Are we going to hear from the folks that are here? Are they part of your presentation?
No, no, I think they, they just wanted to come here in the discussion.
Council, any other recommendations or, or guidance that we want to give them to go back and look at while they're working with the church on a plausible method here?
He's still thinking.
I, I just want to ask this question one more time. So this is the alley currently. I, I, I'm just curious why you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to move any poles then if you just, if the ingress and egress were here and these moved over, you would gain probably four more spaces this way.
There, there are options for that. I think today we're not looking to settle on one because again, that's something that we would want to work out with the, the church. I think we're, we're here saying we have a commitment that if we have the quit claim, that we can continue in those conversations and we're trying to work out a plan that's amenable to them that doesn't, you know, essentially net zero on the parking count for what they have approved. And again, back to the timeline we're under, you know, with a lot of grant programs, we're anticipating the, the notice of funding to come out soon. They don't offer a lot of turnaround time and we're really.
The turnaround time is less than thirty days and it is a very, it, it's probably about a hundred-page application of, of supporting reasons for this program. Thousands of applications go in and about fifty of these are awarded.
Did you mention there were three adjacent property owners? So we talked about the church, the gas station.
And there's another commercial property between the county commuter building and the gas station. It, it is fenced in the rear currently.
Oh, this whole, that's not the whole, that whole thing's not the gas station.
No, there's a two separate locks.
One there and one there. Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Are you seeking approval of the quit claim before you resolve the matters with the church?
We're seeking, I guess if I can speak for myself, it's more or less consensus that this is something that, that seems to make sense, that we can flesh out, you know, the, the details with what that access would look like with the church. Because in the grant application, it would be for planning and design. You know, if we're going to invest the time and effort to put that in for this facility, we want to know, is it again, option A, is it B? What are we really working with? We don't necessarily need to finalize the quit claim and all those details. But again, if that NOFO comes out, which we're anticipating would be the next month or two or less.
Several, and then probably the next three weeks. I wouldn't anticipate it to be more than three weeks.
And again, it's one of the bipartisan infrastructure law programs. So they're present now, but you don't know how long they're going to be available. And so that's what we're trying to take advantage of the opportunity that we have here today. And so I recognize it's, there's a lot of unanswered questions. It's just generally, is this something that we think we can find resolution on that meets the church's concern? And it also allows us to, you know, move forward and look at a grant application and future investment and expansion at this site.
So given, I, I'll give you my suggestion. And we'll see if it has traction. Given the city engineers' discussion about the other departments, I, I would be acceptable. Because, well, let me start with this. I want to say I appreciate the fact that county commuter is a transit organization that it serves Hagerstown as well as other parts of Washington County. I think it's vital to, to our community. So I would like to see this go forward. I think it's, I think to kind of use the term we were using, that it would be acceptable to do this quit claim. But I would say there would be two conditions. The first condition being that not just the church, but, you know, acceptance of your plan by all three adjacent property owners that you sent letters to. And I'm talking about some kind of go knock on their door and get them to sign a document that says, we're okay with whatever it is your plan is. And then the second being that whatever city utilities that would have to be relocated, you know, that, that the county would then, you know, contract or whatever, how, whatever the term is with the city light department or others to, to, to facilitate and, and compensate for, for that work. Those are the two things that come to my mind. But I would generally be in favor because I think transit is important and, and it's important to our citizens as well as the whole county. So, so that, that would be my thought.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else have any other thoughts on that?
I'm in favor of it. I'm glad that you're working with the surrounding properties. It sounds like, you know, a lot of due diligence is going into making sure that it works for all. So that is much appreciated. So I'd be in favor of it.
Councilmember Vernet, Councilmember Alshar.
I'd be in favor with Councilwoman Brady's position.
Yeah, thank, thank you guys. I mean, we hear often that public transportation is such a needed commodity. So the more that we can bolster that here in Hagerstown, fantastic.
Can you expand the hours?
You know, we are working through our transit development plan and I'd be happy to give another presentation when, when that's at the review stage.
That would be awesome.
Because we could do a whole conversation about that and all the logistics that go along with that. But again, you're staffing all the things we're talking about here to support expanded service hours. But yes, that was, that was definitely high on the customer response survey. Expanded hours, meetings and Sunday.
Is that plan going to incorporate the things that were mentioned in the presentation? Like, like, you know, electric vehicles and low-admission vehicles? I mean, is that all worked into that?
It is. The, the transit development plan is a much shorter timeframe, so five years. So we more or less look at evaluating existing service as well as kind of evaluating existing routes, riderships, what's on the horizon. So I wouldn't say it's not in there, but at least for us, that's probably just be on that five-year timeframe.
Well, I would look forward to that because I think this is a great opportunity where the city can be very supportive of the county and the county's work. So, thank you.
All right, nothing else. Thank you guys very much and please come to work in agreement. Jim, I think we get to keep you here.
Don't move, Jim, don't move.
All right, it looks like the next agenda item would be the acceptance of a grant from Maryland Department of Emergency Management.
Right, so again, this is another offshoot of the Bipartisan Infrastructure Act funding. They came out during the, in, in response to the pandemic. This is money that was made available through FEMA to state's hazard mitigation or emergency management groups that then they could pass it on as a sub-award to different applicants, different cities or counties that would apply for the money. So back in twenty twenty-three, staff did apply for funding. Our thought was that one thing that we, we have a fairly good map of our storm branding system, but what we don't have is knowing its capacity very well. We, we know that we have bottlenecks in certain places, but that's never really been analyzed. So what we proposed in the grant application is that we would use the grant funds to hire a consultant to actually start doing some computer modeling of our storm branding system so that we can identify bottlenecks or weak points. And then we can plan through our CIP product process to try to go out and address this thing. We were actually selected for an award, and this is more than a year ago, it was back in early twenty twenty-three when we got the award announcement. An award of seventy-five thousand dollars with a twenty-five thousand dollar city match to it. For some reason, it sat for basically a year before they decided to move ahead with the process. But now we are in the process of, they just sent us a, a grant agreement or an MOU. And the next step will be that we would actually execute that and then begin the work under the, under the grant. So that's really what this, this request or this, this memo is about.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you. Is this the program that Columbia Gas was going to cooperate with their line inspection? And then that kind of fell by the wayside, by the way? Is that what this is?
No, this is, this is different. The Columbia Gas, I think they ran into, I think it was a budgeting issue on their end and that's why they haven't proceeded.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. All right, it looks like we have Amanda Gregg for a couple of items here. All right, Ms. Amanda, it looks like we're talking about proposed updates, the application guidelines for Invest Hagerstown Home Ownership Initiative.
Yes, we've been going through updates lately about our different guidelines and just getting them a little updated from past versions. So, sorry, guys. Now, it's not going to help, but thank you. Pretty sure you guys are all pretty aware with, of this program with Invest Hagerstown. I've been administrating it now for about a year and obviously we know that the real estate market's changing. It's been a very popular program. Last year, we did forty-two applications and closed. This year, we're at thirty, so we have funded. It's, it's a really great program, but some of the guidelines that we're trying to tighten is kind of pushing it more towards our first-time home ownership or moving into the city of not owning another property. There was just some language in some of the guidelines that weren't really giving absolute clearance on what that was. So we just kind of went through, updated a few things. It all is in yellow there in your packet. Some of it's just removing some verbiage, some of it's adding more clarification. I don't know if you guys have any questions, if you've had time to go over that or if you want me to go over some of them or?
So does the homeowner have to be a first-time home buyer?
So the language that we're proposing is not that you have to be a first-time home buyer. You cannot be a current homeowner. So renter, that doesn't mean you've never owned a house, but not at the time of purchasing now. Are we kind of taking that out? A little background on that, though, this year, eh, twenty, out of, out of our thirty applicants, twenty-one of them were first-time home buyers.
Does this have to be their primary residence?
Yes.
Is there a reason why we would exclude someone who was a homeowner but wanted to move into the city? Maybe, maybe not city-to-city property, but someone say that lived in the county and wanted to move into the city? Is there a reason we would exclude someone like that?
No, I think one of the verbages that we added that was something different was we're adding an asset test. So in the current market, someone that currently has a property that's selling, has a large amount of assets that's coming in and putting down. So that's kind of what was our thought behind it. Do they really need this program? Are we, I mean, if we wouldn't have had some payoffs from this fund, we would have been exhausted in two months of the fiscal year. That's how popular it's going. So I think our look is in the past, maybe in other cultures, not other cultures, other past years, it's been hard to get rid of this money, where now we're in a really great market that it's not that difficult. We're trying to streamline it to people that really, really need the funds.
I think though, that it kind of to Matt's point is that if it is someone that lives in the county and is selling that asset and moves into the city, that that would be acceptable to me. Because we're trying to promote home ownership, you know, and within the city. So whether they get, you know, money, I mean, your LTV is, it can't be lower than eighty percent. So even if they had money to put down and also needed this and couldn't get money back, then I think that it would be help to promote homeownership.
It was just the verbiage that we took out was because it had said, you know, priority would be given to the basic curtain renters, first-time home buyers and vacant properties. It was very hard to administrate from the fact of when they're coming in, like, are we giving priority to those people? So we kind of just took that verbiage out and added who are current homeowners were ineligible. I don't know if there's another way that council proposes that we could say that. I don't know if there's another way that council proposes that we could say that and that like, when you use this, you can't own another property. Like, I don't.
Well, I guess if you just say it's primary residence, then it's primary residence.
Yeah, but it also says you may not own any residential property at times of sale. So that's an added.
Right. So they would have to be a landlord somewhere else. Again, I mean.
It's basically, the program was, it's all what I guess you want the program to be designed around. I mean.
Right, exactly what it would help. What are we doing? Are we promoting homeownership or are we helping? You know, you've also removed the income.
Well, I just took that out. That was very confusing that people looked and saw the income. It just moved that it just said we don't require income documentation. So we still don't. It's just, I thought that was very wordy.
So you don't have to be within a certain income limit in order to qualify for the program? So again, the assets and owning another home is somewhat irrelevant.
Yeah, it seems a little nude.
But administering is, you know, I understand the amount of.
I think we found this in the past two, the years of going through, people coming in that are selling their house and they're getting $150,000 and coming and applying for the 70. Now, yeah, why wouldn't you? I mean, if you could get money through the city and use it, that's great. But then there's people that really needed it, that we were exhausting our funds in less than 60 days. So I guess our point was to try to not narrow it so much, but at the same time, get it to the people that we felt really needed it in, in the area. Again, we do want to bring other people into not just first time home buyers, not low income. And that's why we did not restrict income, because there is some people out there that might have the income, that don't have the assets to back it. Just trying to find some way to slow the belief that was just, it, it's just going out fast. And are we okay with it being gone in two months then?
Maybe we look at expanding the program.
So I guess to Councilwoman McIntyre's point, hearing what you're saying, should we include the idea of revisiting this with staff, you know, in a six month period to then redetermine if, if it's still going out, you know, at the appropriate pace or if there is room for what?
And I think that's kind of, you know, in, in our discussion in our committee, we talked about, you know, homes, like anything built after 2000, was that something we could look at that we're going after older homes? We're, we're hitting that. I mean, last year, I think our average age of a home was 1936. You know, out of the 42 homes, that was the average age of a home that was being used for this product. Last year, 37 out of the 42 were first time home buyers. 50% were from out of town last year. This year, I think it's a, a mix a little bit more. I don't have the exact numbers because it wasn't the end of the year. But I guess our, our, our thought was just kind of cleaning it up a little bit and also just trying to not exhaust the funds so quickly.
Where are most of the homes being purchased? All over?
Yeah, I mean, I've got Breaker Drive, I've got Bellevue, I've got Irving, I've got Salem.
How much are downtown, like in the?
I mean, there's a good. Most of them, I would say, are not on the outskirts. So you've got Broadway, South Mulberry Street, Jonathan Street. I think there's a decent mix. Kind of why we went back to the 100% of the medium because we were going up, we were getting to the 433,000 sales price, which.
I mean, what's $7,500?
And we've had, I mean, they think, you know, because it's Hagerstown, some people think that they can apply for the property. They don't realize it's not in city limits. And we've had people that have wanted 550 and wanted to use this. So kind of just cap it. We don't, have we had many over that price anyway? No. So that was a kind of a mute point. Our, our cap would be 347. And we really haven't, we haven't had any over that. So that's not going to hinder a lot of this. Just trying to keep it a little bit more streamlined is, is what. And I mean, if you're, we could say you can't own another home maybe at that, at when you settle on this property, a simultaneous close, if that would, if you guys are wanting to move that route.
I think that that seems reasonable, that you just can't own another.
Another property.
I mean, rental or, and this has to be the primary residence. To me, that's just me.
Yeah, I mean, the idea here is promote homeownership in the city. I mean, like I said, I, I'm okay with kind of the way it's presented with the idea of coming back and letting us know after the first of the year, you know, how, how's it going? But I would also want to try to, if, if there, if there's a mechanism for someone that wants to, that lives outside of the city limits, but wants to move into the city, sell their house there and move into the city for, you know, for all the good reasons of living in the city, then, then that this kind of precludes that. But I'm not suggesting to change that now. I'm just saying, I'm suggesting let's.
The majority of the people that I've had this year that would have had another property that sold it to move here were not locals.
Okay, okay.
So they're moving from Hyattsville, they're moving from the guy, one guy's moving from Georgia. Like, they're not in the county here moving.
Okay.
That have another property. They are, they're renters in the county that are, so we're not really excluding, I would say, our demographic here. It would be more of someone selling in the city and then moving up into Washington County, into the city.
How, do you know how much we have allocated to this section of?
This year, I think we had 20, I think it was 106, 180. I know we had 20, I think it was 165 or 185,000. So last year, we gave out $315,000. This year, we're at 277, well, we will be with what applications we have available. Yeah, it's, I mean, it.
That's awesome.
We're doing, I mean, and last year, we, we. I mean, we did refund it. You guys helped, like, we reallocated some funds and, and did that. And some of them, we are getting payoffs. I got three payoffs this year. You know, if someone not living in the house for five years, that helps refund it. But it's definitely getting pushed out. It's a great program and helping a lot of people. So we're just trying to not have it gone within two months.
Would, would you, your department, would you, would you see a need for more money in this pot? If that came up later, like to further fund this program, because it seems very successful.
It's a very successful program. It's very popular. I mean, obviously, real estate's very hot right now. So that's again, why I think we relooked at the guidelines, because a couple of years ago, these guidelines were perfect for it because it wasn't being utilized. So I think that's something we need to come back and keep looking at. Where are we at in, in the market? And is it making sense for the people that are wanting to purchase? Is our guidelines too tight? Are they too loose? You know, where are we at there? And revisit it at that.
That budget time would be a good time to do.
Yeah.
So refresh my memory. When we first started this program.
The vacant structure.
Right? It was because nobody could identify a house that had been empty for a year, right? Minimum of 12 months. And the goal was to get somebody in to buy that house. And then use this as sort of seed interest to encourage that individual to maybe consider that option over other options. I guess for me, like, I'm thinking about, you know, the early 2000s, and I get that it was a little different in terms of program orientation. When we had, you know, 20 properties sitting through the old home store process, right? And, and you couldn't sell any of them. You probably couldn't give half of them away. And so, you know, 08 happens and, and the housing market crashed. And then we get to 2012 and 13, and it's like, you know, how do you get people back into some of these places? You come up with this idea when Dave was the mayor and and, and it becomes successful. And I guess for me, like, I'm starting to read some of this stuff, and it's like every time I read it, we try and limit it more from the prior iteration of what it was.
When we went from that program and then this skyline came out, they drastically opened it up. Because that program was very specific.
What was it a time where, where properties were?
Where you were trying to get the bacon.
Were of abundance, right? It was, it was a significant number. But I guess for me, like, like I read some of this stuff and I don't know why we would write something that would discourage any person of any income level the opportunity to, to participate in a program whereby it encourages that individual to move into the city and own a home.
Agreed.
As long as it's their principal residence, I could care less if they own seven houses in six other states. If this is their principal resident, because they're bringing their livelihood and their disposable income into the city as their primary residence. And, you know, just this, this item alone, a rental dwelling consisting of two or more units and upon purchase by program applicant will be converted to a single family owner occupied dwelling in it within six months. Are we getting rid of that because nobody wants to do that?
Well, part, part of it on that side again is, and I've actually, I was pretty heavy on removing that part. It's extremely hard to administrate. So you give the funds to someone and six months later, they do not convert it into a single family dwelling. How do you ask for that money back?
I can.
You can, but.
Who doesn't stay there for five years? How do you get that back?
Because it's a recorded deed. I mean, it, it, it's a settlement. Like, if they go to settle, like, sell it, if it's not released, they have to pay the.
So it's harder to track if someone has done that versus sell, sold a property.
Right, because then it's on the. It's just pretty, and what a lot of people saw this and were like, I'm buying a duplex. My mom's going to live in one side. I'm going to live in the other side. So yes, it was more, and we have a rental program for that. I guess this was more looked at a homeownership. I mean, if that's the way the council wants to go and they want it more than one unit, that you can be a landlord and.
Well, no, but I mean, me, for example, I mean, took, I took a house, right? That somebody turned into three apartments and I bought it and turned it back into a single family home. And I guess, yeah, you, you, I guess there's no real way you could like stop by the house and say, hey, why do you still have three meters? Well, it's expensive to convert it back to one meter, things like that. But I just, I don't understand why we would continue to limit it. And it sounds like the impetus for doing so is we want to limit the pool of, of persons that are eligible for something. And please don't get me wrong, when, when, when it sounds like we're going is removing the folks, you know, that, that, that have the qualifiable asset, you know what I mean, and means to do exactly this.
I haven't had anybody approach me to want to convert a duplex or a triplex into.
Item.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that still goes back to that whole point of, and, and we can continue to do that. If we want to keep it broad, I mean, we definitely are the most for down payment assistance when people call. They can't believe that we are this open. There's no other down payment.
That's good.
What, what do you care if I have $50,000 in the bank? Can I?
I don't understand.
Let me ask it this way, councilman. So just using your, your example of, I don't care if they have six other houses in other states, as long as it's their principal. So if we have, this is $7,500, right? If we have $180,000 in the pot, at $7,500 per case, that's 24 cases. We can do 24 in a fiscal year. So I guess my question to you is, would it be okay for just the first 24, regardless of income, regardless of other assets, first come, first served? Or would it be better to try to direct those 24 slots to those that, and this may be a cliche, that needed the most? That I think, I think that's.
I always find that term funny, needed the most. As if they're defining an individual needing it the most by simply looking at their bank account and, and, and their, you know, their, their, their fiscal disposition, right? And, and I use this example, when my, my twin boys, the, the fourth and fifth kid we have, were eligible to go into Washington County Public Schools pre-kindergarten, right? We got notice after notice saying, you're not eligible, you're not eligible, you're on a waiting, we show on a waiting list. And they say that because they look at your fiscal resource and say, you know what? We see your income and you, you can go, hey, but they don't recognize, they don't recognize, you know, what your, 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 you know, investment or, 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 you know, expense oriented items are. They're looking for that one kid and they say, well, you're, you're, you're at line X and therefore, you know, you belong in, in position Y, right, in, in, in this structure we have. And so instead of being equally, you know, instead of that, that, that opportunity being, being equally available, they just make that assumption. And it's like, okay, well, you don't take into account that now daycare for me is $2,400, right? Because it's double, because of the twins, you know, versus, you know, the alternative. And so we literally got to the point where, where it was a week before, and I know this is odd, but they said, well, one kid made it. So I just look at stuff like that when we're writing things like this and say, you know, what are the metrics we're going to use to, to, to basically determine people by? You know, it, it can't be that.
Well, it's, it's clearly, it's clearly not income based. And you mentioned income. Because it actually, it actually precludes any kind of income verification, right? So it's not income based, but it is, but it's asset based, which may or may not be, you know, connected. I mean, usually they are, you know, if you have higher income, you have more assets. But not necessarily, that may not necessarily always be the case.
That's right.
Our average age this year, so far, 30 people is 24 years old.
Ms. Amanda, may I ask you a stupid question? In the year where we ran out of money, like last year, this year, we haven't run out of money in this pot yet, I assume, or we have?
We did off of our initial funding, but we had some payoffs in reality, yes.
So we've funded anybody who has qualified and applied currently, right? And that number is, is what?
30.
30? So I, I, I'm of the mind that anybody that wants to, I mean, they have to live here for five years. So we're encouraging people to live here as their primary residents in the city and own home. I, I don't see why we would put additional restrictions on it personally. You know, we want, if we, if our goal is to encourage homeownership, whether, whether it's someone that may not have as many financial means or not, as long as it's their primary residence, we want them to come and live and spend their money.
Take out the asset part of not having, if they had 20% of this purchase price, you would say, take that out. Like, don't have that as a requirement.
I don't even know that for myself personally. I just, I see we're adding some of these restrictions in here.
The only restriction that's being added really is your asset test.
Right. So let's say you're a recent retiree, you're looking to downsize, you sell your house that you've invested in the city in for 30 years, right? You have this liquid asset now. You want to downsize, you want to utilize this program, you would immediately be an actual. That's odd to me.
So are you saying that even to use it as a, a rental, that that would still, you're?
No.
Okay.
You have to, it has to be your principal residence. I mean, that's the whole point of this program.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. But the only restriction that would be, would be an investor. Otherwise, it's unrestricted. And I understand where you're coming from because, you know, there's a lot of, you're like, so where's, where are we going to get taken advantage of or something like that? Because usually, usually the.
It's difficult when you have someone come in and they have $150,000 and they're putting down on this property, and then you have that person that needs every penny of this or they're not buying a house. And, and that's probably coming from my previous background, but I, I just have a, I mean, and I know what you're saying, to not exclude, and I would, why wouldn't you use this program? If the city's going to give you $7,500 and my lending. and my lender knew about this, or I knew about this, why, absolutely, I would use it.
If I was a senior that just retired and, you know, was selling, and that was my sort of like liquid asset base that I plan to, you know, uh, uh, live on for some, you know, for some time, yeah, I mean, I think I would.
I guess the the main purpose behind this was being a little bit more easier to administrate and also for the fact of it is going so fast that we'll get out of it sixty days and then for the next eight months, we're, you know, ten months, we're not funding.
But Marty showed us something.
Yeah, so then we won't be fun, you know, then we're not funding anybody. So and and that's fine if that's the way the council wants to move on it. It was just, this was a way to maybe stop some of the hemorrhaging.
And I think, well, and and when we talked about this as we're administering it, um, to Amanda's point, you have somebody who's like, well, I'm gonna buy a six hundred thousand dollar house. And and that's great, and I understand not wanting to restrict that. But again, then you have someone who who needs every penny. And I think we just sort of looked at what we interpreted as the spirit of the program. To 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 make it available to, you know, not necessarily any kind of income restrictions or limitations. Maybe a little bit on the price of the home, but just to to sort of direct it to those to, you know, that they have no other, not that they have no other choice, but that's that's our option, this is make or break.
I can see it both ways.
How how many properties did we hit before we hit our our initial cap on this?
This year?
Yeah.
I think it was twenty seven. One eighty five, so twenty eight, twenty seven, twenty eight.
And we did a total of thirty?
Right now, we have. So this year, we will have, right now on our foot, we have enough to do thirty seven right now, without any payoffs, any additional payoffs.
The thing to do is to look at it like, you know, Councilwoman Perrini said, when it's budget time, to see if more, if this is like going so well and the objective, as we've known, is to promote homeownership downtown, that, you know, that it just gets more money. So you are able to, so you don't feel like you're getting rid of it in sixty days.
I mean, because I I don't feel, I think it's disingenuous for for the city, the council, to put forward a program. And then it just runs out. We either need, should do one or two things. Either ratchet down the eligibility or increase the pot of money, increase the funding to meet, you know, whatever the conditions are that that allow for eligibility. I think just putting it in place and saying, you know, here's here's this amount of money and and here's this kind of open way, open form of eligibility, I think. And just and it just runs out. It just stops after sixty days, ninety days. And then you have someone that comes and read about it online or whatever and shows up, you know, a hundred, a hundred and twenty days after the beginning of fiscal year. And sorry, you're out of luck, come back next year. I find I have, I don't think that's the right way to go about it.
Councilwoman Burnett, do you have any thoughts on that?
Tons of programs are set up.
I mean, for me, is it's to the budget point, if we had more money in the pot, we wouldn't have to be so restricted. Right?
Which is why I suggested that we come back in, you know, six months from the beginning of the thing and, you know, January or whatever, and look at it and make a decision.
Can you? Why was duplex removed? Why is it being removed?
Because it's more than one unit and right now we only have it being one unit.
In a situation, I'm I'm certain that this happens where a duplex is owned by one person and one half, the other half is for sale. We're precluding that then?
No, that is technically a single family attached. A duplex is a true combined share a wall, one deed.
Understood, thank you.
So a single family attached is the duplexes that you see a lot in Hagerstown.
Gotcha.
And those are all.
So point number nine, you had indicated interest in adding applicants must show lender financing loan to value cannot be lower than eighty percent. What was, what was the purpose in adding that item?
It was on the asset test of people coming in and putting on two hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand down and using the seventy. So it was, it was some kind of criteria that we weren't limiting income people coming in, but some way that maybe we could tighten it a little bit to not hemorrhage. So we've had, just because, again, the market of people selling their other residents, especially in other counties that are getting a lot more funds and moving to this area. It was just, they were putting a lot of funds down. Did they truly need the the seventy five hundred? Maybe, to your point, they did. I, you know, we're asking now also for a closing disclosure to show that those funds are being used for down payment, closing costs. Not receiving funds back at closing, those kind of things. Just again, it was more, we're just, we're flying through it, which is a great thing, but are we helping the people that we truly were set out? Like Marty said, the intent of the program, are we truly helping those people if we're running out in sixty to ninety days?
Well, I think the intention of the thing was to promote homeownership in general.
And I'd rather see.
And not like a certain income level or a certain, it was really just to promote homeownership. Unless I.
And this certainly seems like a marketing tool to buy a home here, as opposed to buy a home in Boonesboro or Sharpsburg or somewhere else, right? It's our way to bring.
We're one of the fewest, and I I was at a seminar, we're one of the fewest cities that have a program that is not HUD backed. So that gives us the flexibility to make our own guidelines, where Frederick City, Frederick County, Montgomery County, they're all backed by HUD that have income restrictions, asset restrictions, you know, they have all of those that we did not have to have. They have the extra inspections that you gotta give. So this, our program truly is different than any of the other ones, because it is city, you know, it it's funded by the city. It's not backed by HUD with all those extra restrictions that go with it.
Frederick also has sixty couple percent homeownership versus, you know what I mean, so.
There's a very difficult.
Their emphasis is increasing homeownership.
So if I'm trying to like summarize this, everyone's in agreement with taking the asset and the LTV out and leaving those, leaving like that it's open?
I I mean, I may be the opposite, but I like the goal of helping those who need the most, because there's a generational wealth that is missed by a large demographic, not only his county, but nationwide. So for me, I think that program, this program would help those. So however you make that look, I'm okay with that, as long as those in need get it first.
And I mean, I thought the twenty percent is pretty decent, because that still lets them have that twenty percent if they wanted to put that down on the loan and not have the mortgage insurance, or it's still a good bit of flexibility. Twenty percent is, that's a, it's a decent amount. We're not talking about, if you have over ten thousand dollars, you can't get this program. I mean, and some of these purchase prices, I mean, you know, three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, sixty thousand. But it was just some way to try to slow it down a little bit. And that wasn't gonna stop, the the majority of these people still really needed it. So there was just a few that we thought some way we could kind of tighten it a little bit. Is it gonna answer that we won't run out in six months, three, four months? No. And and again, that's the cycle of the market, so.
And I think by the number six of the goals, by cis homeowners who might not otherwise qualify for financing without the assistance of this program goes back to the point of those needing the most, right?
So that helps get their LTV down, so then they become eligible to buy the house anyway.
And a lot of these are backed, which it it already puts the cap on it. Majority of these loans, I guarantee you, about fifty percent is backed with the Maryland Mortgage Program. Who in their way will already have those guidelines that you cannot own another home. You cannot have over twenty percent. You actually are income capped. So we are usually in third lien position on these, that those guidelines, regardless how you want to say that they're not there, they're backed by your first initial loan. So they are being tied to this program. We're just not saying ours is.
Because the loan officers that are referring to these, referring the customers to us probably know that they're in that MMP program.
So they're getting like a first of ten thousand from the state of Maryland and seventy five from us.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't matter.
Eligibility requirements in place before they even get to us.
But if there's something that you guys go strongly about, or if you're, you know, like you talked, if you would like to not see the homeowner be ineligible, but just not own another property.
Councilmember Elshar?
I mean, I'm okay with number nine. I think nine gets you to where you want to go.
Yeah.
But.
You're saying, but even to ask that test.
The rest of that stuff?
So you could, you would take out number seven?
Well, I just think that I would take out most of this. Now, like I said, I think number nine gets you to what you're trying to get to for now. It's a good start, but I also don't want to get in the position where it then becomes, I don't know, where you're sitting and waiting versus running out. And I I just think that that this is sort of like a let's throw in a lot of stuff all at once that does doesn't incur. I mean, I remember when we when we when we put this thing in place, we literally said, the best thing that can happen at the end of the day is that we run out of money.
Yeah, really.
It just was.
Which was the goal.
Right. And I feel like, I feel like we're we're successfully doing that year after year, and there's a lot of criteria now being thrown in to say, well.
I guess, but that's why, one of the reasons we're coming back, and that's something like, you know, Councilwoman Perrini was saying, is it's the market, it's the waves of the market. So I guess the reason that we went from the original program to the next one was because we weren't getting anybody doing, because it was too stringent. So then we went on the opposite side of the pendulum and went very, you have a heartbeat, you get this money. Like, basically, that's how the program was set up. So now, I guess, we're trying to go back because the market's very hot and houses are flying off the market. So our thought was just to, but we can keep going the way.
I think we also quickly ran out of vacant houses that were that were
Absolutely.
marketable for somebody that wanted to even do this. In other words, the eight thousand bucks wasn't worth the fifty thousand they had to put into the place to make it livable. Like, we ran out of those places really quick. And the market solved those places for us.
It was a great program. I used it a lot.
I just don't. Like, I think the loan to value thing, just it just gets you.
Okay, so take that out.
Well, no, I think that that's the state, because that gives it the way you want to be, as it applies to.
So you're saying, take out.
Finding the people that need this additional funding to make the deal work.
I think it's seven, number seven.
Penalizing somebody for being fiscally responsible with their liquid assets, to me, it just seems like it just reaches a little too far, number one. And I think that it, I think that it penalizes seniors specifically who have built up those liquid assets over time, and that they don't want to take that risk of of putting it, you know, into a house, you know, because they're depending on that funding. Uh, to live.
I I appreciate Councilmember, Councilwoman Burnett's point to making sure that the people who really need this have it available, but I I mean, we can't speak for the future, but I would certainly think that if another six applicants came after we ran out of money and wanted to utilize this program, that, I mean, this is a great use of the city's money to encourage homeownership, that we're guaranteed at least five years of a person being a citizen of town. I mean, that extra money, I, it's invaluable to have people
I but I think that the reality is within the the uh, the realty market, the person looking for this money that 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 is having to to go after that much of a loan are probably the people that are gonna benefit from.
The majority are, yes, yeah.
And I just think that it.
It's also education on getting it out there, and certain lenders know about it. They look like, which is great for them. They look great to tell every client that's purchasing in the city. Which, again, if it's available, why wouldn't you take it? So that we were just trying to stop some of the. So are we wanting to take out the applicants who are current homeowners or ineligible? Just leave it with cannot own another property?
I don't support somebody not being eligible because they own some property somewhere else. I don't know the point of that.
I think that came back to, well, administering the program as well. If you own another property and you say, okay, well, yes, I'm gonna buy in Hagerstown, I'm gonna, this is gonna be my primary residence. Again, we have no way of verifying that that remains the case. And I think that was part of our concern.
I I I think, I think we need to find a way to verify that, because that, to me, is an abuse of a lot of things, including the way that the state of Maryland views property taxes on principal residences, instead credit and all that versus, you know.
It really is our only way when we go back to finding it is looking at Estat and seeing if it's a principal.
Actually, there's more ways, and I would refer you to Paul Falk, because I just went through this with him on a property that that I became aware of, and they had to dig, but they figured it out. So.
So in conjunction with that, code actually has taken our list and it is flagged in Munis that if they become a rental property, they know and they send us notification. Like, if they apply with the city that, and they are on our five-year term, code has come with us and have have flagged that, that if they try to apply for a rental application or whatever, this does notify that they've switched in those five years.
Yeah. I guess, for me, I just think of like myself, like, I own a piece of property in West Virginia. It's a residential piece of property. It's not livable. My wife would love to live there, but it's not something you want to live there full time. So how would you, you know what I mean, like, I would immediately be ineligible because I have a camping spot.
So that's number seven and number eight will be the proposed additions that would be struck. Again, I'm, I would be fine with that, too. All of this is with the, whatever I'm fine with is with the caveat that that you come back to mayor and council in January with a six-month evaluation. Not only of this, because this is would be starting soon, but kind of of the whole program, so that decisions can be made as 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 the fiscal year twenty six budget is starting to be considered.
And number ten has to be qualified. I mean, if if somebody gets twenty bucks back settling table because of some clerical processing of the paperwork, I'm assuming that isn't what that means.
But a lot of times, just like Amanda said, the the mortgage programs that are over this, because we're in third position, won't allow the buyer to get money back anyway. It's just a part of, like, some of it. Yeah.
Or take it out of the loan.
Right.
I understand it has to be qualified, that like, you know, if you happen to get a dollar back table
Right.
that process, that doesn't suddenly make you, you know.
They were getting, people were getting thirty five hundred and four grand back.
To me, it should say, like, you know, you can't get more than five hundred bucks back. Something reasonable.
Yeah.
For the addition to the goals, number five, promoting promoting homeownership to current renters. But for the eligibility, number seven, priority will be provided to current renters, first-time home buyers, and those purchasing vacant properties was removed.
Yeah, that's, it was really hard to prioritize that, to administrate it. So when applications came in, they weren't, they don't come in all at the same time and you say, well, here's renters, here's, so were we truly prioritizing that? And I guess that's why we added this up here, that we're promoting it to homeownerships and current renters and took this out because to actually administrate it was very difficult.
I guess it didn't really come up. It's like, like she said, we we receive them one at a time. It's first come, first served. So then, you know, it, but yeah, if somebody like planted three at one time, really.
We only have two left. We would, I mean, that's, but it really was a first come, first served basis. It was basically when the applications come in the door. Sometimes we'll get five in a day. Sometimes we don't get any for two weeks. It's all when contracts are written. So I think it wasn't that we don't feel that way. It was to have it in the guidelines and actually administrate it and can prove that we gave all the prioritization to these. And that's kind of why we did add the applicants are current homeowners or ineligible, to basically say, we're only providing it to renters, first-time home buyers. So that was kind of a replacing number seven was counteracting what the applicants couldn't be a current homeowner.
Are you okay with that, Councilwoman?
Well.
Well, I mean, again, back to to those in need. I mean, those who are renting possibly does not have asset, does not have property elsewhere that they own. So this would be helping. So this would be helping them get to that generational wealth that is missing. So I'm okay with not owning a home for ineligibility. That's just me.
I'm not sure I understood that last.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, for, for those who, um, who already own a home to be ineligible. As it, going back to renters having the opportunity to have assistance without payment, to actually buy a home for once, is what I'm saying.
So you're saying that they should be first-time home buyers?
Pretty much, yeah. Current renters, first-time home buyers, but is that the premise of this program?
That's, I guess, the thing. I see your point, but I guess we need to decide what the focus is. I mean, if it's the focus is just to promote homeownership here. I'd say leave the prior, even if it is difficult. I mean, you may not always be able to. Someone applies the first day the program's open. And, you know, they're, they're a current home buyer and then later in the program. You get three applications and one's a, a renter and one's a first-time home buyer and one's somebody who has another home, then you can prioritize, but. I mean, I, I don't see any purpose to strike it out. You can prioritize where you can. I mean, I don't know, unless that really causes a headache for you guys, I'm not. I'd leave, I'd leave in there.
I think, I think the point, what if somebody were to come in and ask, how did we, how did we do number seven? To actually show them that we prioritize that over another person? When, like I said, they come in until we get to that last application and we're done. It's basically first come, first served. We're not prioritizing. It's like, well, you've applied. We have the funds now, so you're next in line. We weren't. Giving that prioritization unless you were to say we're giving a qu- a quarter of it every quarter. So that quarter was that ran out for those people. That's what we did. So you weren't really. Doing number seven unless you got down to the very last application and five came in. And you gave prioritization to the homeowner that was the, you know, a first-time home buyer that was the first one. So that was kind of the, the take of why I guess we struck that just for. If it was ever brought up of how we tracked it, could we absolutely show that we gave prioritization to that? Especially if we're taking that anyone can be eligible, you know, any homeowner. I know, it, it's wordy, it's, and, and we're not trying to make it difficult at all. It's just. Trying to really get the, the essence of the program and give it to the people that need it. And this is great numbers. I mean, I think we have a lot to be proud of. You know, in the last, not even year and a half. There's seventy-two people.
I don't.
Awesome.
I don't think that having the requirement of being a first-time home buyer is, I think that that. It keeps with the essence of the program. It allows people that have never owned a home to live in our city. And I think that it's kind of, I think it is what our, what the intention was. Is to allow people that, you know, haven't had the opportunity to own a, own a home that we're going to help.
So, and I didn't put the first-time home buyer in there. We also did renters in case somebody had a hardship and. They had a bankruptcy, they had a foreclosure, they were getting back on their feet. If they were a current renter, we weren't eliminating them from the program. They just weren't coming from a homeownership perspective.
You could also say, you could say that you haven't owned a home within the last five years. You know, you could even just put it in that. Cause you have not owned a home in the last five years. Could stem from hardship.
Again, out of the forty-two people last year, only five were not first-time home buyers.
And we ever ran out of, that's all.
And we ran out of money. And then this year, nine of them have not been out of the thirty. Though it's not, you're not eliminating a drastic of, you know, over fifty percent of the people that have applied.
I mean, one, one way to kind of discern the difference and maybe. Fix some of the eligibility issues. And I'm not proposing this for now, but maybe for next fiscal year. Is at least from my perspective, see, I think promoting home ownership. Is slightly different from promoting first-time buyer ownership. And I would encourage that, that there for next fiscal year, that there'll be twin programs. One that's just focused on first-time home buyers. Cause those criteria are pretty simple, right? I mean, you're not worrying about where they owned houses before and if they did before, first-time home buyers, period. And then this program, which then could be crafted, it still could be first time because they fit. But it would really be crafted for those that are looking to relocate or, you know, kind of the, some of the issues that the seniors. That Councilman Alshar was mentioning and so forth. So I kind of see that as an ultimate answer to the dilemma. But that's not for tonight. It's not for this year, uh, but something to maybe work on for, you know, the next fiscal year. And, and again, I'll, I'll just say I'm, I'm fine with. Loosening up your suggestions as long as we're coming back to look at it, look at this again after the first of the year. And so I don't forget, I just want to point out to the city clerk. I don't know if the dates in the proposed motion are placeholders, but they're not correct. So, so when you guys get to that point. Cause you can't, you can't introduce paths and affect it all in the same day.
It comes from.
Yeah.
That was part of what they did.
Okay. So going back, so are we striking seven and eight?
I'm fine with that.
Yes. And just adding verbiage, um, the five hundred dollar max back at seven.
I have part for five hundred dollars is, um. You know, a pretty big percentage of the seventy-five hundred dollar. I mean, if the councilman's concern is a incidental amount, I can't imagine that would be more than a hundred dollars.
Why don't we say two fifty?
I don't have a perfect number.
I don't either.
I just don't want somebody penalized at the table because something.
Because of a, you know, an incidental.
It isn't the amount, you don't want to penalize somebody.
Right.
For something that's outside of their hands of a settlement process.
And are we striking ineligible applicants who are current homeowners or ineligible? Are we keeping that?
I think that's part of the dilemma.
I mean, unless, unless we say we keep that. Unless we say we keep that and revisit that for a secondary program like Councilmember Prini said, for maybe existing homeowners. Uh, maybe a lesser amount of, of, of an amount.
Have to get together. I'm just saying, I own a home in Frederick. Let's say it's a town I was owning in Frederick. Still coming into Hagerstown. My loan to value is eighty-twenty. You know what I mean? Uh, this is. This is an incentive to make that work. And I got to look at something a little bigger. Now I have four kids instead of two. And, you know, this market offers that affordability option, uh, to do that. I just don't know why we would penalize that person. For making that move to want to own a home in Hagerstown.
Well, it'll be interesting to see if we do remove that, to see the data when you come back to the, you know, in Jade Valley to see like how many people really.
Still own another house?
Right.
And another, you know, we can.
But she said that many people didn't even, that they, only five had owned another home.
Before this.
I mean, which is not very.
Last year out of the forty-two, only five were not first-time home buyers. And this year out of the thirty-nine are. But all of these, we've kind of asked, like, to date, none of these own any other properties currently. So they've sold simultaneously. So at the day of settlement, they basically sold this house and bought this one in Hagerstown.
Those few applicants.
This year, the nine.
Right.
Nine people.
Out of the thirty so far. So no, we haven't really come.
I'm saying leaving.
Yet across to that.
So she just stay as it is and she can present the data and you can make the decision. Either you have two separate programs next year or you keep it as it is.
And it's not saying first-time home buyers. We just basically said you can't own a home currently.
I.
I know, I know.
Well, I hear that. I, I use my stuff on who, his family left the home. None of the kids wanted it. It's up in Nanticoke, PA. Good luck trying to sell a house up in, uh, you know, up in the area where it's at, you know? And so they have this thing and it's sitting and it's sitting in their ownership, you know, with sort of a continual, what do we do with this place? It isn't as, it isn't as if there's some broker out there, you know, buying up properties. Here's a scenario that that person could run, run into that then immediately makes them ineligible for simply buying a house.
Not if you say that if, if it's their primary residence.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. So primary residence is one thing. Right. So primary residence is one thing, but you're saying that owning another home, that that is also okay, which is fine.
Well, that's what she's asking.
Right.
Is are we going to allow people to own another property and apply for this program?
Yes, because it's going, this is going to be their primary residence. They're living downtown or in Hagerstown.
So change the verbiage to. You can't have a, another primary.
This just has to be your primary residence, the purchase of this house. So you could own, which it says, yeah, number two. So you could own a house in Oki, whatever. So we're, we're striking.
After state law, you can only have one primary, I guess, one primary residence.
So you can still have the Nanticoke home.
So I think, I think the consensus is that we would just strike that. And leave the primary residence piece.
And I think that the good news out of all of this is the data you have provided, which says. It's already doing that. In other words, seventy-five, eighty percent of parties that are taking. Advantage of this program are already the people that we want to. For those five or six or ten people, you know, over that period that aren't. I wouldn't want to begin to guess what their scenarios are, you know what I mean, to automatically exclude. Uh, but I think the loan to value thing is a big thing that, that, that does that. That's the person that is most typically, you know, looking for these types of programs.
But so we're all, that, that will, that basically our only caveat that we're really adding is that. There needs to be no less than eighty percent loan to value.
But it sounds like I'm.
Yeah. So at least there is some kind of criteria. Cause the rest is just really verbiage. Yep.
One question. Number three on the last page, where you're changing it from a hundred twenty-five to a hundred percent.
Yeah.
That the purchase price of the property must be no more than one hundred percent of the average home sale price within City of Hagerstown corporate boundaries. Determined by National Association of Realtors. Do we know what that number is?
There's an actual website we can send out.
Do we know right now?
Yeah, three forty-seven, one hundred. I think three, three forty, or four hundred.
So no more than a hundred percent of that.
It's easier for calculation when you're sending it out to someone to verify it than them, they're multiplying it by a hundred twenty-five percent. Like, it's just an easy flat number. And again, I don't, we have not had one property this year that's had a sales price over that. Three hundred was our highest year to date.
That's, that's why I wanted to get to that question, because I feel like if you're trying to target first-time home buyers. Then there is an area where you could uniformly apply a metric that. Speaks to that audience, right? Because you're talking in the two hundred to three hundred range. You get above that. So that hundred percent, you know, especially in this market. Uh, you know, where there's a fraction of the homes on the market now than there was, if you lowered that. You know, I think then you would, um, be more targeted toward that first-time buyer, um, probability. Um, so if there were flexibility, for me, it would be in that number because I think that's an app, inequitable application than.
Cause your first-time home buyers typically are not. But then we've had some that. It, yeah, it's hidden. I mean, again, there's, there's a caveat to each one of them. Um, and I. It was just, again, what was the intent of the program and to use the money to the best way possible to support the residents.
I would support going as low as ninety percent on that. That's just me. But I think that that's one of those things.
And that would get rid of some.
Next fiscal year that you look at and say, okay, where was, where was everybody at? And if they were at that level, you say, you can comfortably say, we can probably adjust that down.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Cause it's going to then keep it at that first-time buyer probability.
So. From a number crunching standpoint, that makes sense. I look at this number differently. I look at this number as. Kind of creating, whether it means to or not, creating the target market for Hagerstown. And the, the lower you go from a hundred and twenty-five or whatever percent, the lower you're aiming your target. I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, and I know, I don't know, maybe the, this number of. Of transactions is not going to materially affect the overall market in the city limits. But when you create a program that is purposefully driving down the ability. Or, or the, or the, you know, the sale price of houses. I think that's kind of counterproductive. So I would be okay with a hundred percent versus one twenty-five, but honestly, I would have left it alone. For that reason, not, not for the tech, not for the number crunching reasons that you were referring to. So.
But that's. I'll tell you that.
That's just me.
I think that the best measure of what that number should be would be a conversation with the realty community. That can tell us what the, what the, the, the area of, of cost of the homes, they have the most difficulty moving. In the market, in the city, you know what I mean? Hey, the houses within the hundred fifty to two hundred range are the hardest for us to move. They stay on the market the longest. You know, if you lower it, will that, will that incentivize moving those properties faster?
If, if you have that conversation, um, there is a difference between median and average. And this is referring to average. I think probably in that conversation, looking at the median. Uh, uh, sale price is, is the more appropriate metric, but again, not for tonight.
Amanda, yeah, maybe that's something we revisit in six months. Like that's so appropriate.
We're okay with staying at one hundred for the moment.
I'm good with that.
I think so.
Thank you, guys.
But you thought that was going to be short, didn't you?
Unfortunately, poor Amanda, she is not off the hook yet. Now we have the request to terminate financial incentive agreement for Blackwell Two LLC USMH Student Housing at one hundred North Potomac Street.
As staff was presented, uh, from Blackwell to terminate the remainder of the financial incentive that was dated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Is set to expire July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. We have, our staff has reached out to USMH and they have also given written support in, um, terminating this agreement.
I'm fine.
Yep.
Sounds good.
I would also point out that the draft motion dates.
Come on, Amanda. Get on your date.
Okay. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Good discussion.
We've got Chief Piper on Hagerstown Police Department Hiring Incentive Increase.
It's almost morning, so. Good evening. Uh, I am here to request the approval to, uh, increase our hiring bonuses that we have. We've had in place for, uh, for some time now for lateral hires, people that are already certified as state of Maryland. And for those that are certified in other states that would meet the criteria of going through what's called a Compared Compliance Academy here in Maryland, which is only five weeks. Uh, the reason why I'm asking is that the hiring bonus that we had before has brought a few people, but. Competitive market. Um, we're still, we're still really working hard to, um, bring immediate help to the department. Um, I appreciate the, uh, the approval of the pay increase that you guys did a few weeks back for us. Uh, that makes a big difference for the starting pay and we're seeing the, the benefits of that. So what I'm asking for here is we currently have a twenty thousand dollar signing bonus for lateral in-state hires. I'd like to move that up to forty thousand. The difference is going to be this time is that that forty thousand will be spread out over a four-year period. So you would get, uh, as a new hire coming in, um, you would get forty, you'd get ten thousand dollars at the end of your field training, uh, segment, which would be within a few months of being hired. And then at the end of year two, ten thousand, the end of year three, ten thousand, end of year four, you get ten thousand. Uh, kind of an incentive for you to stay to get those bonus, those bonus dollars at the end of those, those years. That would apply to the compared compliance as well, but over three-year periods, over four-year period, obviously. Uh, we, we, we can pay for that with the, um, salary savings that we currently have. And if we reach a, um, or if I want to say when we reach our allotted staffing model. Uh, we would put that into our budget years for, for covering that in our general fund budget, uh, for any out years for that. But currently we can pay for that, um, in our current budget. I want to point out the value of this. So we just hired a young man that started Monday with the academy that won't start until February. And so he's, he's going to be on a payroll and I'm glad to have him, I'm not complaining here. But we're going to have a gentleman that's hired now, being paid a salary through, until February, six months of an academy and then four months of field training. So really, the benefit of that, that person we've hired Monday doesn't give us that value until end of next year, when he can be on the street by himself doing the job in a sworn capacity. So the value that we're paying there is a starting salary of sixty-one thousand dollars. So almost sixty-one thousand dollars going into a salary of a person for a whole year. This would allow us to bring someone in and pay that ten thousand dollars each year, forty thousand dollars, to get somebody on the street in two months. So that's the value that we're seeking here, is some immediate help to kind of bolster our ranks. We're getting a lot of people coming through our hiring process now. We've got, like I said, we've hired someone on Monday. We've got someone else coming on board that's already been accepted a position and the end of this month and then one, the beginning of November. And we still have twenty people in our background process for the next academy. But again, we won't see the value of them until the end of next year. So this would, would offset some of that with us and get us to that closer number that we want to reach to be able to do the things we want to do. Then working with the union, we, we tried to get a, a schedule change with them through, to be able to start in January is another incentive, maybe draw some other people in and give some more life balance to those that are currently working with us. We couldn't come to an agreement with some, some language that had to go into contract at this point in time. So we'll, we'll address that as we move forward with the open contract negotiations. But I just want to bring you that attention that we, we're trying some other things as well. So again, I'm, I'm not asking for any new money here. If we feel that we're going to meet our, our hiring number, then we'll, we'll add that to our budget for the out, the next budget year cycle to put this, this budget money in there.
Is this comparable to jurisdictions around us?
This is much higher than jurisdictions around us.
Okay.
Much higher than, yes. When, and, and I know Scott can talk about this when he's talked to MML folks from around there, surprised. I can give you an example, down, down closer to the city, seventy-five hundred dollars is a hiring bonus. So, you know, other jurisdictions do things a little differently. We've got other jurisdictions close to us to give a hiring bonus for anyone coming through the door, whether at entry level or, or other, but not at this level in terms of lateral or comparative compliance.
How many? How many of these incentives would you anticipate there would be, I guess, in a year, in a fiscal year?
I would, at best, I would think we would probably, with just on a historical, what we've looked at, with a twenty thousand dollar bonus, five. And we could, we could get lucky and get more than that, but five would be probably a conservative number to say that's probably what we'd be looking at in a, in a year.
There's a line here in your memo about turnover, I guess, I don't know if that's the right term. So returning former HPD employees. What criteria would you recommend for those that have already received, you know, an incentive at whatever level, left and now are considering coming back?
Well, as you can see, my memo may be eligible. We still have the, we still have the decision to hire you back. So what I put that in there for and why we're offering this up is that we've had members of our department leave two years, three years ago, that if they choose to think they want to come back here, they left for whatever reason that was, to better for their family, to opportunity. Maybe it didn't work out for them and they want to come back. We can take a look at them and decide whether we want to take them back. But if, if you are a current employee and say, well, I'm just going to go ahead and quit and then come back two weeks later and get a hiring bonus, then that's, the answer is no. So it gives us the ability to decide whether you can come back.
But even if it's a year later, it could be, I don't know what the right term is, but double dipping, you know, taking advantage of the program, what have you. I mean, not to suggest that that would happen, but I'm, given the fact you've described this as significantly more than any surrounding areas, you know, I hope we're not creating an unintended ramifications.
I don't, I don't, I don't have any concern that that's going to be the case. Because again, in this market, if you're going to leave to go work in another department, you're leaving for a reason. I don't anticipate that. I, I think there might be some, there may be, and I don't, I'm not saying there are, there may be some former employees that can see this, you know what, I, I really liked it in Hagerstown, I left and thought it was going to be better for me where I went to.
Grass is always greener, yeah.
And if they want to come back, I don't want to turn away that option. We know what we're getting when they come back because you know what we had when they were here. So that's the, that's why I wanted to offer this up. In the previous iteration, you know, former employees weren't eligible. I wanted to at least open that door to give us the opportunity to decide whether they come back to us or not. Not just because they are certified, we can, we can honestly look and say, we're not interested. There's nothing, nothing wrong with that.
So just out of curiosity, so last month, the council approved, you know, reopener of the contract to adjust the pay scale of, of the, of. And I, I know this is just saying it very generally, but adjust the pay scale of, of Hagerstown Police Department. Is, does this fall in that same category that it's a, it's a negotiated issue or this is over?
This is, this is not a part of the union contract, it's not a part of the union at all. This is, this is a standoff, this is.
So this will always be at the city's discretion?
That's correct.
Okay.
At any point in time down the road, this body or, or the future body can decide this is not the path they want to take. Or from our standpoint, it's not beneficial from a, from a business standpoint to, to, to keep doing that. We wind up getting our numbers up to a certain point where we don't need to offer bonuses, then that would just go away. I can be coming back asking you to rescind that.
I was thinking, that was kind of my question, like, how sustainable is this? Once you get up to the amount of officers that you want and, you know, that are assigned, is this, because then it eliminates the salary savings, right?
Right.
So sustainability for this can be reevaluated, okay?
Yeah, and if we, we feel like, you know, that there's a, a consistency that, you know, two or three people can be brought in under a program like this and we, we look at that, evaluate that from a value standpoint, fiscally, we may want to keep it, but if it's not something that we need to worry about, then we can bring people through at the entry level and, and bring them through that academy setting. Because we're at a more sustainable staffing level, then this wouldn't be as necessary.
Got you.
Thank you. Anyone else, somebody?
I'm only going to ask this because you brought it up, it's not directly related to this item. But scheduling. You touched on it very briefly, and I guess my curiosity, was that more a function of simply being, or generally, being opposed to the, the options put forth for scheduling? Or was it more a general feeling of or expression of, this is an idea to entertain, but it's really got to wait for, 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 for contract negotiations over that as a whole?
No, what we had saw, we had, we had found a schedule that works at other agencies. And that schedule would allow for some better work-life balance for all staff that work in patrol. But there were some logistics that came along with that in terms of the way we currently run things in our union contract. The language would have to be changed. And with that, there were some concerns from the union side that they wanted some, some guarantees that we couldn't meet in a timely fashion. Our current contract says that in November, we have to have the schedule set.
We couldn't meet that opening the entire contract.
Right. And, and that, that, because of January being started when that, the schedule would start, by November, we need to be established. And we were running out of time. And so at that point, I just went back to them and said, we'll, we'll bring this up at the regular union contract negotiations because it's going to be part of the contract.
I'm more encouraged by that answer than the answer being, we're not interested in that at all.
No.
No, okay.
That's, that's very interesting.
No, I think, I think there's a very big interest in the, in the schedule. It was just timeliness and we were in, in a crunch and there were some things had to be worked through. I just, we weren't going to make the, make it through that. So I think we can work through that here in the next month or so. Not saying it still couldn't happen in January, but that would have to be an agreement that you even had to want to do based on whatever we come up with out of this union contract, to be able to make that happen in January. It's just the current contract says we're bound by a, a date and we'll stick to that date and adjust as necessary moving forward. Because I think this new, this new schedule would be an encouragement along with this bonus to attract other sworn officers to come work for us because of that, that schedule, I think would be an attractive thing. And I was getting that from the union members telling me that they had people they were talking to that were interested based on what we're doing. But if the current schedule is not conducive to them, they want to move from where they are to, to us, the five-eight-hour-day work schedule.
All right.
I'm good with this. Peter said he's fine with it. I think it's encouraging. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, we are now to city administrator, your favorite party.
Do you want to get up there and do it?
Well, I had spooky music.
Oh, that's right.
Now that we've gotten rid of the minutia, now let's get to the important stuff.
Yes.
Just want to let people know that trick-or-treat, it suggested that families recognize their trick-or-treat activity this year on Thursday, October thirty-first, from six to eight. That's when the city will be more aware of kids and, and moms and dads and grandparents in the street. And just to be clear, it is rain, snow, sleet, or hail that trick-or-treat will be recognized on that date. There will be no rescheduling, there will be no cancellation. It was wind a couple of years ago, it's right, the hurricane that came through. So just to let people know that there is no rain date, it is Thursday, October thirty-first, from six to eight. We'll put out a press release on that as well and paste it all over social media. So go out and have a good time. That's it for me. And I also have no city administrator comments on it.
That was your comment?
And it's on a big note, so I'm good.
Yeah, you are.
All right. Councilmember McIntyre.
Oh, nothing this evening.
Councilmember Perrini.
I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Burnett.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Alcheck.
Thank you for taking the helm this evening.
Oh, that's all you have said. That's all you said. That's it.
All right. Like Georgia just stands on out.
I'll never wear a seat.
I mean, it is one hour. It's one hour, but I'm going to let her go.
And for me, you know, we missed Mountain Mayor this evening, but thank you guys all for being here. That's it, we're adjourned.